The Columbus City Council Meeting for November 17, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Alarcon?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Lopez?
Plensky?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
(Music) Oh, see can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous flight Over ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, see does that star-spangled banner yet wave O' the land of the free And the form
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our council meeting this evening, anyone on our audience would like to address the council on any items on our agenda, we would invite you to please come forward. We ask for your name, your address, and we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the November 3, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, resolution number R25-141 approving and accepting the permanent drainage easement, excuse me, by Arbak Enterprises LLC. Item 4C, resolution number R25-142 approving the agency agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics for Federal Aviation Administration, grant number 3-31-0019-021-2026. To obtain federal funding assistance for the Columbus Municipal Airport Eight Place Tea Hangar Project, this is CIP 23-030. Item 4D, Finance Department report. And item 4E, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to special presentations.
Item 6A, proclamation of thanks for support presented by the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 1575. Sure, who's presenting on that?
I don't know. Do we have someone from Local 1575 to present? I'm sorry?
I don't see him.
I don't see JoJo.
I got nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we don't either.
Okay.
That's why we were asking. Okay.
I guess we'll move forward.
If somebody gets here, we will move back to that. Is that okay? Can we do that if we need to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a no action.
All right. We'll move on then to reports of city offices.
Item 9A, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation Loop River South Bridges project, City Engineer Rick Bogus.
So the contractor's just taking advantage of the weather, obviously, so they're doing all the, a lot of the concrete pours they can, and that's not what that, those pours are, are like footings for piers and stem walls and things of that nature. They're doing some, they'll be doing some driving in some sheet piles, things like that coming up, kind of standard stuff. And then remember, it's all on the river right now because they're, they're allowed to do that until, I think, early in the spring. While they're permitting tomorrow, they're want to re-stripe the center of the, of the northbound lanes, you know, the North Bridge, the ones that's the one way on each lane. They're trying to prepare it for winter, so they're trying to do it so it has a more reflectivity for the winter. The state will be coming by in the next couple of weeks, putting up some vertical panels, just kind of getting as much winter ready as they can for that, so they'll be doing that. And then, just a reminder that the bridge that there's, that's there today that they see is a temporary bridge, and that's for their construction purposes. That's how they access to construct the bridge. And at the end of the day, when the, when the new bridge is done, that bridge goes away. We had some questions about that, just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
I think, I think the other thing that would be good to clarify, because a lot of questions come up from the public, or a few questions have come up from the public about potential, you know, ice jams, and boy, there's a lot of pilings in that, that temporary bridge. What's going to happen? I think it's, and I know, maybe just explain the scenario that's laid out for that.
Sure.
Would you please?
Sure. So the contractor has what's called an emergency action plan, and part of that is for ice and snow and debris removal on that temporary bridge, well, on the bridges, actually. So the contractor does have a very vested interest in that. I mean, they, like, that temporary bridge and all the equipment sent on it is worth millions of dollars to them. So they, it's in their best interest, too, to make sure that that's clear on that temporary bridge, to keep the ice moving or pulling the logs away that might get there. And they have, obviously, the equipment there. There's also some cameras in placement, too, so they'll know when it builds up when they're not there. But they'll be there almost every working day, come when they need to, to get that clear, because again, that's in their vested interest to keep it open as it is in ours as well.
Thank you. I, I just think it's important the public know that that has been looked at, has been, you know, addressed with a plan. You know, no plan's 100%, but that's a plan that's in place, and it's been approved by the state. And it, actually, it was explained to interested parties about four weeks ago at a meeting that was held. So it is something that's being, you know, being thought of, and hopefully, they've got their ducks lined up if needed. All right.
Correct.
Yes, sir?
Along that same line, when does the bridge go, when does that bridge go away?
The temporary bridge?
Yes.
When, when the other one is, so what they'll do is, they'll, they use that bridge to construct it, so as they don't need it from north to south, they'll remove it. That's going to be a little ways off, because that, that new bridge isn't due to be open until 2027. So it's going to be after that, but they'll move it kind of from north to south backwards as they don't need it anymore to access the new bridge.
I was looking for a-
A date?
I was looking for a-
I don't have a date for you. I don't, I don't think they're ready to give that timeframe date yet. We just got to see how things are moving, how they want to access the bridge. But again, you know, they want to get out of there as soon as they can, too, because that's money for them as well, so.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions regarding? All right. We'll move on to new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Jamie Lavandera as police captain.
Council members, with your permission, I wish to submit, the mayor wishes to submit the name of Jamie Lavandera for appointment to the police captain position at the November 17, 2025 city council meeting. Per council rules, a two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a police captain. The Civil Service Commission certified Ms. Lavandera at their September 22, 2025 Civil Service, Civil Service Commission meeting. Throughout her 26-year career in law enforcement, Lavandera has performed multiple roles, including 9/11 radio dispatcher, community service technician, patrol officer, and criminal investigator, where she has been instrumental in investigation of many serious crimes. Her current role as patrol sergeant has allowed her to demonstrate her commitment and leadership skills. She's been a part of the Human Trafficking Task Force and Internet Crimes Against Children, and has applied her specialized knowledge to combat these crimes effectively. Her career reflects a profound commitment to justice and a tireless effort to make a positive impact on our community. Sergeant Lavandera holds a bachelor's degree in human resource management and has completed many advanced leadership trainings. In addition to her police service, she is actively involved in organizations such as Columbus Aeronautics Way and Youth Families for Christ, and has become a recognized face in the community. Council members, I entertain a motion for this appointment.
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Jamie, would you please come forward and say hello? Or I should say, Captain Lavandera, would you please come forward and say hello?
Greetings. I thank you all for approving me tonight. I also thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve this community. As, as you all serve the community, I feel honored to do so. So I appreciate your passing me tonight.
Thank you.
Item 13B, appointment of Tanner Dryfirst as police sergeant.
Council members, with your permission again, the mayor wishes to submit the name of Tanner Dryfirst for appointment to the police sergeant position at the November 17, 2025 city council meeting. Per council rules, a two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a police sergeant. The Civil Service Commission certified Mr. Dryfirst at their August 5, 2025 Civil Service Commission meeting. Officer Dryfirst was born and raised in the Columbus area, graduating from Columbus High School in 2014. Prior to beginning his law enforcement career, he worked for the Columbus Parks and Recs Department as a seasonal worker. Officer Dryfirst attended the University of Nebraska Omaha to study criminal justice and emergency management. While living in Omaha, he worked as a security officer with CHI Health, working primarily with adult psychiatric units and juvenile behavioral health facilities. He was hired by the Columbus Police Department in August of 2020. Officer Dryfirst is a certified field training officer, a licensed remote pilot and drone operator, and has recently been, been credentialed as a drug recognition expert, a certification that provides a department and committee with an expertise and focus on drug impaired driving enforcement. In Officer Dryfirst's career, he has been awarded the Firearms Proficiency Award from the Basic Training Academy, the Award of Valor from the City of Columbus in 2022, and nominated the Officer of the Year. Council members, I entertain a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
We, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Sergeant Dryfirst, please come forward and say hello to us.
Hello, everyone. First, I just want to say thank you for the appointment. I'm really looking forward to stepping into this new role and the new challenges that I'll be facing. The team of officers that I get to go be leadership of is Captain Lavandera's team. She's done a good job preparing them and everything, and they're incredible group of officers that'll help me kind of transition into this new role. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Item 13C, appointment of Joel Pope as police officer.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to name, submit the name of Joel Pup for appointment to the police officer position at the November 17, 2025 city council meeting, subject to successful completion of all tests and training. Per council real rules, a two-week waiting period is waived for the appointment of a police officer. The Civil Service Commission certified Mr. Pup at their June 24, 25 meeting. Mr. Pup is, is a resident of Columbus, Nebraska, a graduate of Nebraska Christian High School. He has a bachelor's degree in education, health science from the University of Nebraska Lincoln, is also certified in CPR, AED, and first aid. He has been employed at the Columbus YMCA as assistant youth coordinator since May of 2024. Mr. Pup will attend Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center and participate in the Columbus Police Department Field Training Program. This is a budgeted position. Council members, I entertain a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Second? We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Officer Pup, would you please come forward?
Appreciate the approval of me being an officer and all the other officers as well. Being able to get to know them, Officer Strucker, Captain, as well as Dryfirst, I congratulate them. And I thank you guys very much for the approval.
Item 13D, appointment of Melanie Jensen to the Downtown Business Improvement Board to fill the unexpired term of Joe Marksmeier.
Council members, the mayor wishes, with your permission, to submit the following name for appointment to the Business Improvement Board at the November 17, 2025 city council meeting, per city council rules. Melanie Mel Jensen is the owner of Mel Hair Salon, located downtown at 1268 27th Avenue, has been a Columbus resident for 10 years. Her journey as a hairstylist and small business owner has been fueled by passion, hard work, and a genuine love for connecting with people. Through her customers and local businesses that make the area come to life, she sees firsthand how special the Columbus community. She believes that by supporting each other, the whole community grows stronger. Melanie is excited to share her positivity, energy, enthusiasm to make, help make downtown an even more welcoming and vibrant destination for everyone. She looks forward to supporting local entrepreneurs, helping create events that bring people together, and finding new ways to highlight what makes our city unique. Mel believes downtown is the heart of Columbus and is passionate about ensuring it continues to grow and thrive. Council members, I entertain a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, application from Cushing Terrell on behalf of Les Schwab Group Holdings LLC for preliminary plot of Les Schwab subdivision, northeast corner of 23rd Street and East 11th Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the preliminary plot of Les Schwab subdivision to be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Do we have a representative that could explain what is going on?
Well, we don't have a representative, but I'm sure our city engineer can, and I say that, understanding that the representative who was here at our planning and zoning meeting last week for this moving forward came all the way from Montana. And that was a, a whole six-minute presentation in front of the council. I think it was okay that he didn't come for this six-minute presentation in front of us. So, Rick, would you please just give a, an update on what this is, please?
Sure, yeah. That is, that is correct. It's not a requirement. We just kind of won the bidder if they can. So this is a, a three-lot subdivision. Les Schwab is a tire company that's out west that's looking to move here. They purchased this property out in 23rd Street, East 11th Avenue. They plan on doing a business of theirs on the, on one of the lots on the south end. And so this subdivision is a, is a roadway with a cul-de-sac, all the required water, sewer, storm sewer extensions are there, and they meet all the requirements of the preliminary plot.
Do we know what's going on on the other lot yet?
They have two other lots. They don't, they, this Les Schwab Colneys Company is going to own the south two, and the current property owner is going to own the lot three, which is on the north side. So we don't have anything for that, but it is a three-lot subdivision, so it does open it up to make it easier for future development if somebody's interested.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Motion passes.
Item 13F, application from Advanced Engineering Consulting Services on behalf of Meadow Ridge Properties LLC for preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge Properties subdivision, 34th Street, west of 53rd Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move the preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge Property subdivision be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge subdivision. Any discussion? Any comments? Any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, application from Advanced Engineering Consulting Services on behalf of Meadow Ridge Properties LLC for preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge 12th Edition and request for a waiver of subdivision regulations for the length of cul-de-sac to exceed 350 feet, the extension of Greyhawk Place, south of 43rd Place. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move preliminary plat for Meadow Ridge 12th Edition be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge 12th Edition. Any discussion? The only thing I would ask, and it was brought up at the planning and zoning, and Fire Chief may want to just comment, the extra length of a cul-de-sac, is that a concern? I mean, because to me, that's probably one of the only thoughts that it could be a concern, you know, from 350 to 700 foot.
No.
Okay.
Don't care enough for those for that reach.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13H, application from Advanced Engineering Consulting Services on behalf of Shady Lake Development LLC for preliminary plat of Westfield Edition, the south side of 23rd Street, west of 54th Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the preliminary plat of Westfield Edition be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Westfield Edition. Any discussion?
I noticed that the lot sizes on this particular plat are very large. Why, why is that?
We would ask Mr. Zwingman to please give us some answers to that.
Good evening, Councilman John Zwingman with Advanced Consulting Engineering Services, 1363 26th Avenue here in Columbus. The owner wants to have rural residential zoning on that. Rural residential zoning requires lots to be greater than one acre. So, this portion of that, I think there's 40 or 60 acres there total, this subdivision, as part of the entire, will have larger lots, and it will get more dense as they build out to the east of 48th Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Zwingman? He wanted to be up there for more than a minute or two, so I, all right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13I, proposal from Library Furniture International in the amount of $13,937 for additional shelving in the children's library, the full amount to be reimbursed by the Columbus Library Foundation.
Mr. Mayor, I move the proposal from Library Furniture International for library shelving be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Library Furniture International. Any discussion? I just think it's awesome, and we just need to highlight as much as we can that the Library Foundation is paying for this. I just think it's a great thing that they do and continue to support our library in multiple, multiple ways. And most of the time, it's behind the scenes. This is one of those times where we see it and we get to acknowledge it and say thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13J, reallocate $4,020 from CIP 26-19 and purchase from Schiffer Signs Incorporated for new graphic designs on the community service tech and code enforcement vehicles for the police department.
Mr. Mayor, I move the reallocation of $4,020 from CIP 2619 and purchase from Schiffer Signs for graphic design on the police department vehicles be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the real, approval of the reallocation of funds from CIP 2619. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13K, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any comments from council members this evening? I have two comments this evening. First of all, if any of you have not heard, I would like to give my, our congratulations to Councilman Schilling for his recent induction into the baseball, Nebraska Baseball Hall of Fame. Just a great way of acknowledging his involvement. Acknowledging his involvement from his years of coaching, volunteering, and just being a part of that, of baseball, especially here in Columbus. Thank you, Councilman. Secondly, I just want to let the public know that we are kicking off a community-wide food drive, actually in coordination with United Way, looking at being kind of maybe a helper of that, a coordinator and a catalyst to help get the word out. We're using city facilities as locations for drop-offs where food items can be brought to the main fire station, to Charlie Lewis, and to here at the community building. And there's also a spot that Hy-Vee is going to have at their service counter. We know that, you know, food insecurity right now is a big deal. You know, I, I think people might say, well, hey, the shutdown's over, so everything's going to be better. Well, I think more than anything, what the shutdown did was highlight the need that's out there in our community. And if there's anything that we can do to help, this might just be one of those little small things. So, you know, you'll, you'll, you'll see some flyers out. You're going to see some things advertise, you know, some, not advertised, but spoken and put out. I was on the radio this morning with, with Hope from the United Way, you know, just trying to let the, the community know. So, there's definitely a need, and anything we can do to help would be, is going to be greatly appreciated. So, all right, thank you for that. We'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution R-25-143, approving the agreement with Public Consulting Group LLC to provide services related to the ground emergency medical transport reimbursement program.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R-25-143 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Resolution number R-25-143, any discussion?
Questions?
Any question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Chief, is this, we're reallocating, are they simply refiling in protest of every claim? Where's this money going to come from all of a sudden? When Medicaid doesn't want to pay it to begin with, why is it going to want to pay it now?
This is a, this is a federal program that allows for additional reimbursements from Medicaid to cover additional costs. However, the states have to approve it, and that just happened in the last legislative session here in Nebraska. So, they approved that. Now, we have to go through this process of reporting in order to gain back some of that, those funds. When we went through with Public Consulting Group, their estimate was about $75,000 is what they're expecting, 10% fee to them. We met Heather, Tara, myself and Mandy met with, we did a whole statewide video conference about this. It is extremely cumbersome. So, I think the general consensus from the folks that I'm talking to on the fireside is a lot of them are going to do this through PCG their first year to see if it's even worth moving forward with. For us, our payer mix is only 10% Medicaid. So, if our payer mix was, you know, 50%, we'd be looking at substantially more. But as that either increases, hopefully, or decreases, that number would change. But this was all, this program has been around in the country for a very long time. It just had to be approved by the states, which is where we are now.
Very good. That answers my questions.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Well, they're not here. I mean.